Evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. I want to welcome you to the Racial Justice City Council Candidate Forum. This forum is being hosted by three racial justice groups in Melrose. Fighting for Black Lives in our Neighborhood, the Melrose Racial Justice Community Coalition, and Friends of Melrose Metco. My name is Diana Rocha. I will be your moderator this evening. A little bit about me. I have been living with my family in Melrose for 11 years. And a former member of the steering committee for the Racial Justice Community Coalition. And I had the opportunity to do some volunteer work with the Friends of Melrose Metco. But enough about me. Let's let's just, let's just start. Question number one. Last year, Melrose conducted a DEI climate study with a focus on racial justice. High-levels results indicated the following. Black people have lower agreement than white people than they feel a sense of belonging in Melrose, feel that they can be their full authentic self in Melrose, feel comfortable interacting with Melrose institutions, especially City Hall, including the mayor's office, clerk building, department, and treasurer, the Melrose Public Schools, and the Melrose Housing Authority. We have federal, state, and now local data indicating these disparities. What are your plans for addressing and working to resolve these disparities in experiences for people of color in Melrose? Please be specific, i.e. please speak to programs, policies, and budgets. And now I'm going to call the large candidates. Speaking, starting with John Orlandella.
Hello. This one hits, this first question hits a little, it hit a little close to me, literally the first day I said that I was going to run for city council. I was speaking with a friend who is a person of color in the city of Melrose. And we were having a really good conversation, as we would normally do at various, our boys are the same age, so they were playing sports together. We're, you know, as you do at a day when there's downtime between games, we're talking. And he, you know, his experiences as a person of color in the city are radically different than mine. And at first, you know, that first reaction is, no, that can't be. And then you listen to him talk and you listen to the experiences that him and his, and his children had or have had going through, you know, local community stuff, schools, what, just Melrose, the Melrose community in general. And it was really, it really hit. That was the first thing that really hit me in my listening phase early on. And what made me realize is that I think one of the things that we may lose, we may be losing sight on is, and the study shows it, right, is that, and it's the study at all levels, is I think we may be trying to solve the problem before we've listened to the actual full question in the heart of the matter. And I think we got pieces of the whole, but it's not there in completion. And that's a thing that I would, I really, it was like, it was like a day one thing for me because I want to listen. I think, you know, if we have budget for it, it doesn't take any budget to listen. It doesn't take any budget to go and sit, you know, in a, in a community forum like this or go, you know, speak with a parent who says that out loud and just ask, what are they feeling? And because no, no policy adjustments will work if it's just a group of people who are guessing at what they think is the right answer. And, and I think that is the, you know, the heart of where I really want to lead it is understand that question completely so that when we do have, we start putting policies in place and adjusting policies or allocating budget, we're putting it in the right direction and we're not wasting time and/or resources to, to solve a problem that isn't going away tomorrow. And the sooner we get to it, you know, the sooner we get to that end, the better off we are as a community. And three minutes. But I'll take my three minutes and I'll move on.
Thank you. Same question, of course, for the next candidate, Maya Gemmell Lentin.
Gemmell Lentin. Thank you, Diana. Let me start by saying I didn't wait for these results or data to know how black people and other people of color feel about being their full selves in our city or how comfortable they feel about interacting with City Hall, Melrose Public School, and other public institutions. You only have to look at our budget to know how much we care about investing in or uplifting black people and other people of color. Not to mention the calls that I receive on a daily basis, sometimes three or four times a week from people of color and other marginalized constituents and non constituents regarding a myriad of discriminatory experiences or treatments that they are experiencing in various public institutions in our city. Therefore, the results were not a surprise, but still disappointing. And for those who were surprised by the results, let me tell you. Our black students and families are still being called the N-words. And yet, still getting suspended and blamed for how they, they react to that. As an elected official, I will continue to be committed to supporting every marginalized person in, in or out of Melrose, and most importantly, black people. First, our discrimination policy in school is, is not transparent. It is, in fact, very exclusive and mostly crafted to protect white students. I will push to revise this policy. I will push for trauma-informed and trauma-responsive training so that we educate ourselves of how to deal with folks with trauma during, during difficult situations. I will continue to ask that all resources in City Hall and in our departments, different departments, to be translated to be more accessible. Moreover, I will continue to hold ourselves and department heads and mayor, our next mayor, accountable and urge them to find resources that are specifically to serve black folks and marginalized population as well. I will be asking our HR and department heads to review their policies with a DEI lens to see why black and marginalized folks are unable to fit in this culture that we formed and crafted within, in and within our community and departments. I hope to be able to accomplish all this with everyone else's help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christopher Sullivan.
Yes, good afternoon. I should say, good evening, everybody. I wanted to thank the organizers for this event first. And let's address the question about what can we do to address some of the disparities of people in color in Melrose, particularly as it relates to how they connect with city government. I'd like to approach it from my own personal experiences in terms of my personal skills. I'm an attorney by trade. And when I was a younger man, I was in Washington DC. I worked as part of my legal training with two groups. One was called the Center for National Policy Review, and the other one was the Committee Against Discrimination in Housing. These two groups were advocacy groups that worked at the national level with different administrations in terms of formulating federal policy in both the workplace and with respect to housing. And when I worked with them, I really got a good understanding as to the best way to approach racism and to approach this issue by the way of education. It's the, the best way that I can see us in Melrose being able to address this. And what do I mean by that? The question was very pointed and said, what are your specific plans? And my specific plan would be to lean on what I've learned in private practice. I've represented individuals in discrimination cases based on race, on sex, gender, pregnancy, age, disability. And in those cases where I've represented plaintiffs like that, when there's a settlement, particularly if it involves an institutional defendant, a large employer, for example, a municipality, a number of times what you'll find either by a voluntary agreement of the parties or through the MCAD, the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, which is the state agency that handles all discrimination complaints in the employment setting, is that they would put together a requirement for in-depth racial training programs and seminars and racial sensitivity seminars. Now, I know the, the mayor had asked, and Melrose put together the DEI task force that we've been talking about. And when I looked at it, when I read it over carefully, it had recommendations for such training. I don't know if they were implemented this year or not. I certainly haven't seen the syllabus for it or been a part of it. But what I would like to do, if I was lucky enough to be elected to the city council, is to work with the city, work with the city solicitor, and to work on the, on the specifics of those trainings and seminars. How often they're going to be held, what is the content? Because I think if we start there at the city level, which I applaud, you know, the mayor and the administration for putting that task force report together and to implement it is their first real step. Because if people of color feel more comfortable coming to City Hall, coming to the city council, coming for, you know, any type of city municipal services, that's a huge first step, I think, in being able to address the issue.
That's three minutes. Sorry.
I'm sorry, 10 seconds?
Or yeah, if you could wrap up, please. Thank you.
Sure. I think that that would be a concrete way that we could address it. And that's something that I could bring my own skills in training to. And I think that would have a real impact on Melrose in addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan Williams.
Hi, thanks so much. So, you know, when I think about this question, I think about comfort level. People don't feel comfortable in communities and spaces that don't welcome and reflect them. And so, you know, as city councilors, what we do in the chamber is we pass budgets, we pass ordinances. But there's a huge opportunity for us, and a number of us who are on the council now take advantage of this, to advocate both inside the council chamber and outside of the council chambers to normalize welcome and to support people of color. And that could take place in the context of a city event and using your privileged position as a city councillor to ask, what are we doing with this event to bring in people of color, make them feel comfortable, to have specific aspects of the event that are tailored to a certain community, whether that's a community, a specific community of immigrants, or it's a community of faith, or it's a community that's bound together by other means. There's always opportunities for us to do this. We can ask our city departments and ask our contractors, ask our, ask them, how many of these business contracts that we're dealing with are being executed by people of color? So I'm from Chicago, and in Chicago and Cook County, we have something called the Women and Minority Business Enterprise Program. And it mandates that a specific percentage of funds spent on contracts from city departments go to those entities. This program is not flawless, but it's a good start. And it gets people thinking about whether or not they could be using this as a metric in their, in their outreach to contractors. We need to facilitate a more coordinated approach between the racial justice advocates, the Melrose Arts Community, the Melrose Metco Community, and the Melrose Departments across the city. This room is full of people who are doing this work every day and are the best source of information that the city government has at its fingertips for what to do. And we need to invite you more into the council chamber and into the mayor's office and listen and work together constructively to come up with plans. So I ask myself, what can I do to be effective? You know, as a white person and particularly as a white man, I'm a little shackled by my perspective, right? I have to go outside my perspective in order to really understand what people are going through. And that's why it's really important for me to listen as much as I can and for other elected officials to listen openly. You have to welcome criticism. You have to understand that, you know, we're part of a racist system, but that doesn't mean we can't empathize with the victims of racism and learn from their perspective and listen for ways that we can improve. And thanks to the work of this group, we, I think, have a foothold to elect the right people to build a coalition who can work with you and bring you in to take action on these issues. Can I ask, how much time do I have left?
Six seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Edward O'Connell.
First of all, thank you all for providing us the opportunity to discuss these issues tonight. And thank you particularly, Ms. Rocha, for leading our discussion. I have a number of thoughts and ideas in response to the question and to the findings of the DEI climate study. But in the interest of time, I'll focus on two tonight. First, from a community culture standpoint, I would and will, as a city councillor, encourage local cultural institutions and organizations in partnership with our city government and our schools and with appropriate sustained investment of city finances and other municipal resources to develop a coordinated and ongoing annual slate of cultural programs, events, and community-wide enrichment activities to celebrate the history and the contemporary lives of people and members, people of color, I'm sorry, and members of other historically and currently marginalized communities, be they based on race, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, personal identity, ability or otherwise. I see this as a means of civic action and engagement through visual and performing arts, speakers, series, panel discussions, interactive activities, workshops, and more. Community building, civic engagement, and civic action writ large and acting intentionally. I think we can broaden and deepen our collective cultural awareness, educating ourselves as a community about cultural differences and discovering and facilitating ways to bridge those differences. Importantly, this kind of city-led effort would elevate our profile and reputation as a community attractive to people of color and others because of our commitment to actually being a sustainable multicultural community. If we want a more diverse community, in my opinion, diverse people need to know we're here and what we're about. With regard to people's interactions with city government in our schools, and this is not a new issue to me as a city member of the school committee, I think we have to make a serious, substantial, and sustained investment in recruiting and retaining people of color and members of other marginalized communities to work as city employees and teachers here in Melrose for people of color and others, young, old, and otherwise, to actually see their identities reflected in City Hall and in our classrooms. That is the key to this issue. And I think we need specialized roles within our city and school HR departments dedicated exclusively to this task. We also clearly need to retain the services of an expert who can both train this staff and facilitate our outreach into communities of color and beyond. At this point, I think we've established that we can't do this on our own successfully. We clearly need some help to get this moving. And just as clearly, this work is going to take a serious financial commitment and a serious policy commitment that I, as a city councillor, will advocate and support. Our local government should be leading and not following on these issues. And I'm prepared to work with my fellow city councillors, our school committee, and our new mayor to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Berardi.
Hello, how are you? I grew up in Melrose, and the Metcos program started when I was in second grade. And I really didn't see many problems. And we were children just playing with each other. We were all the same. It's really sad to hear that some people are still close-minded and have not the greatest intention. My, I live in a diverse neighborhood and everyone seems to get along. There was a problem with my neighbor who lives upstairs with me and a neighbor across the street. When they moved in, they started giving the people upstairs from me a hard time. I wasn't there, but someone brought it to my attention, and I made sure to call that landlord and have that woman put an end to it so that these people would feel welcome. They should feel welcome. They have an apartment in Melrose, and they should live peacefully. Within government, I'm not quite sure what could be done. It's, it's really sad that, you know, here we are, almost 2024, and there are such differences in opinions. It starts at home, you know, to teach people to accept. My daughter never had a problem with anybody. I honestly don't know, but I look forward to rectifying this matter.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Michael Lyle.
Not attending.
We are going to Lila McLeary-Rally now.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great. And thank you for, first, for this question, for holding this forum. I've had the great opportunity to attend and participate in the Racial Justice Community Coalition's monthly meetings over the past few years. So I'm, I'm happy to see this opportunity to ask candidates questions come to fruition. As the second person of color ever to serve on the Melrose City Council, and the first being only in 2017, racism and topics of diversity, equity, inclusion are not just theoretical topics, but part of my lived experience. As a brown biracial woman and a daughter of an immigrant, I know firsthand what it's like to feel like you don't belong or to feel like you can't be your authentic self in your own community. At the same time, I do want to name the privilege that I hold as a biracial woman and acknowledge that my personal experiences may be very different from those of my friends and neighbors who are also people of color, whether they be black, Latinx, Asian, or Indigenous people. In terms of my service to the community, as a member of the Human Rights Commission for several years and then a city councillor since 2020, I have pushed vigorously for the administration to address what I feel has been a longstanding neglect of issues around race and racism in the city. As a city councillor, I first strongly advocated for the mayor to invest a portion of free cash into DEI training and consultant work. And the study cited here was a result of that advocacy. I've also pushed for more robust employee training, which I feel like is a bare minimum, so that our city staff are equipped with the language and knowledge about how to work with and serve a public that is increasingly diverse. We still haven't gotten there yet. Overall, as I've mentioned, I feel like we've only scratched the surface. And while as a city councillor, I do not have the authority to spend from budgets, I do have the ability to advocate to the mayor for programs and services and conversely, vote no on spending for programs and, and services that may do harm or adversely affect marginalized populations in Melrose. For budgets, I want folks to keep in mind that we need eight votes to pass or block budgets. So it's really important to listen to everyone tonight and over the next seven weeks to see where they stand on these issues. For me, I pledge to work with the new mayor to continue to address these issues, dedicate financial resources and staff time to tackle this important topic of belonging inclusivity for members of marginalized populations and people of color, because I know this experience firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to invite the work candidates to answer question number one, starting with Ms. Barbara Travers.
Hi, thank you so much for hosting tonight. My name is Barbara Travers, and I want to acknowledge right off the bat that I come to this forum as a white woman of privilege. I acknowledge the limitations of my lived experiences when speaking to these important, deeply personal issues for many of our neighbors. I am here to encourage conversations that have been central to the work that I've done in the nonprofit sector. And I am still in my journey of unlearning and learning. I believe in using language that is, and performing actions that do as little harm as possible to my fellow humans. And I will do my best to exercise that thoughtfulness tonight. I appreciate your willingness to invite me here. Creating a space of belonging is the responsibility of the people in power. Government, City Hall, civic leaders, they hold real positional and perceived power. Shifting that dynamic back to citizens is not easy, but it is crucial to creating a space that engenders belonging. Engaging with people openly in a place of empathy and believing should be our basic requirements for how we operate. When someone says, this harms me, we don't need to argue whether or not we think it does. We need to say, we're sorry, and then do the work to learn better approaches for the future. Without that acknowledgement and that action, we will not build the trust that needs, that will lead to collaboration, growth, and increasing that sense of belonging to historically harmed populations. When we see ourselves in our neighbors, civic leaders, business owners, and teachers, our confidence and comfort in those affinity groups allow for higher level of vulnerability. All of us have had the experience of being othered or feeling out of the loop when walking into a room of a group of people who mostly know each other. We know from extensive research that people of color experience that daily and often must code-switch to interact with institutions and systems. This report shows that this is true for many people of color in Melrose. Increasing the overall diversity in our town is one way to help people of color in our community feel like they belong and are represented. I support housing initiatives that create more diverse spaces so that more and more of our community members of color can see themselves represented throughout the town. I believe intentional diversity in recruiting efforts for positions in City Hall, Melrose Public Schools, Melrose Housing Authorities, representation matters. I believe in building a culture focused on empathy, understanding, and acknowledgement of the racial histories in Melrose. And finally, I believe in ensuring that all city employees have diversity and equity training, not just once, but ongoing. None of this is possible without the resources to be able to do this. I believe, and will argue for, a dedicated grants manager in our government who is able to research and manage ongoing grant opportunities. I work in the nonprofit space. I am aware of the many diverse grants that Melrose could be utilizing to fund new initiatives and programs to benefit our communities of color. Without finding ways to close budget gaps and figure out ways for the budget to go beyond level spending, we will never have the ability to implement new innovative and better programming for people of color in our city. How much time do I have?
You're at time, yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. John Obremsky.
We are actually now going to Kimberly Van Dever.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you. And thank you for having me here today. Racial justice is an important focus for our government and for our city. When I first saw this data from the DEI climate study, I was shocked at the level of racial disparity. In addition to those aspects highlighted in the question, one of the other results I found shocking was a big difference in feeling comfortable at what I perceive as an extremely welcoming benign space, the library. 11% of black respondents compared with 1% of white respondents felt uncomfortable interacting with the library. So it was really eye-opening to see the extent of the issues that we have in our city. There, there are many good ideas that people have been suggesting tonight and that were suggested at the previous mayoral forum. Work-based, workforce diversification, recruiting in communities of color, removing names and addresses from resume, using meeting spaces at City Hall for community groups, reviewing policies and procedures. And I think those are all great ideas. I think it's hard to know what will work until we try, and we may be surprised by which strategies work the best. So what I would like to see is us systematically find out what works. And we should try multiple of these approaches and implement them in a structured way with input from Melrose's anti-racism organizations. And we should design surveys or other measures that tell us as we are going how our baseline is changing before and after we try these approaches. So then we'll know what worked, and we can keep working on it until it's right. Because the status quo is shocking and unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Devin Romano. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Devin Romano.
Hi there. Thanks so much for having me. Um, when folks think of local government, oftentimes we think about uh, paving streets or running a school system or, or plowing roads, but uh, increasingly, local governments across the country are called upon to solve some of the big challenges of our times, such as climate change or income inequality and, and yes, uh, dismantling institutional racism. So, once we recognize that we are living in a system designed to create racially disparate outcomes, uh, and that we're a part of a multi-century federal state, local coordinated effort to create those and produce those outcomes, um, it really focuses the mind to thinking about all city government outcomes through a racial equity lens in pursuit of our higher calling of life, liberty and pursuit of happiness. So, um, to bring it down to Melrose, I think that, um, uh, I, I look at a few different policies that have been mentioned tonight, such as, uh, hiring. Uh, I do a lot of recruiting in my day job for cities around the country. And if we don't have a, uh, a diverse applicant pool, that's a huge problem. We have to have applicant pools that are reflective of the community that we serve. Um, there have been great ideas, uh, elevated tonight, such as, uh, stripping away schools or names or resumes uh, to make sure that we don't see biases in there. Um, I take a look at the, uh, state's Education Diversity Act in Massachusetts, uh, helping school systems, um, set goals for, uh, for their workforce. Um, number two, I take a look at a training. I think it's really important to have ongoing implicit bias training for all employees. Uh, number three, I take a look at boards and commissions in, in our volunteer space, because that is in fact the gateway to serving in public office for a lot of folks. And, uh, I'd look at Kansas City's, uh, Women's Commission where they, uh, shifted the, uh, uh, percentage of women participating at commissions from, I think it was ten or twenty percent all the way up to forty-five percent in just a couple of years. Um, so I'd, I'd really like to see our boards and commissions be reflective of our community. Um, if you can't track the data, um, then, uh, you don't really know what kind of progress you're making. So I'd have a long-term plan, add data benchmarks and make sure that data is really publicly available. Uh, Boston has a really great open source city score, uh, software that we can use to put, uh, data on the website. Um, you know, number five, I think Ryan mentioned this earlier, I'd say procurement is a huge, uh, you know, we're a big business provider, uh, here at the city of Melrose. And so I think we should be looking, uh, at an equity lens through all procurement services. Um, I would be in favor of, uh, doing an audit for all of our city services to see how different communities interact with the city. Um, uh, again, uh, teaching of history, uh, is so important and accurate teaching of history that we're seeing as a real hot topic right now. Um, I'd look around and how can we collaborate with other institutions such as, uh, um, M A B C or, uh, the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston uh, to look at C D F I investments, to making sure that entrepreneurs have access to capital in, in an equitable way and really incubating and nurturing the next generation of entrepreneurs. And I do a lot of racial equity work in my, I day job and a variety of issues, and I'm excited to, to work on that here. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Manjula, can I, um, Chidi, please?
Hi, everyone. I'm honored to be here tonight. Um, I have so many thoughts around racial equity and diversity, equity and inclusion. I think I will start in regards to the data that was shared. Um, the numbers don't lie and the numbers represent members of our community who don't feel welcomed, who don't feel wanted. And I think it's really important to remember that there are people, our friends and neighbors who are behind those numbers. So while we look at the numbers and understand the data, I think it is also really important to listen and learn and hear people's stories. And I have a lot of ideas related to policies and programs um, and things that we should be doing, but I think the first step is to bring people together who have those experiences as they are the experts in regards to the solutions. Um, and I believe these kinds of programs, policies should be co-designed with those who are at the center of issues regarding racism and diversity, equity, inclusion. So I want to start with that. Um, second, I want to say that in terms of doing this work, it is a priority to have elected officials and leaders in our city who not just talk about the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion, but actually take action. And I would just like to cite that there are city councillors who are up for reelection, who don't just talk the talk. They walk the walk and I want to recognize Maya Jamaladeen, Lila Migliorelli and Ryan Williams as councillors who don't just talk the talk, they walk the walk and they do it in collaboration with me and with others. Um, and I know that there are other people who are running for office who would do the same. Um, in terms of my experience regarding these issues, um, I'm a school councillor professionally and my career has been dedicated to equity and access in public school systems, particularly for our most, most marginalized students and families. And again, that really revolves around listening to student stories and listening to the stories of our families and becoming collaborative in terms of figuring out ways forward. Um, I think many of you may know that I was one of the founders of the Racial Justice Community Coalition here in Melrose. And it's actually what launched my political career. Um, community members around me who I was in, um, the Racial Justice Community Coalition with encouraged me to run because representation matters. And so without having a background, um, in this area, I took it on and was supported by one of our mayoral candidates, Jen Gregoritis, who really, um, helped me understand what it meant to run for city council and then how to do that job while I was in it. And I think that's such an important part of doing this work.
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so now we're going to move on to the second question. And I'm going to read it. Two high, two high priority strategies of the recently passed Melrose Housing Production Plan where first, pass the Community Preservation Act, a property tax earmarked for affordable housing, historic preservation and open space. Two, create a down payment assistance fund for low and moderate income households looking to purchase a home in Melrose and target law on ownership rates among marginalized communities. Do you support these high priority strategies? Why or why not? So let's start with, uh, the members of the at-large candidates. Uh, Mr. John Orlando, please.
Yes, I'll, I'm gonna hit each one of them one at a time, because I think they, they're, they're both extremely important core topics, but they're very different in the effectiveness that they are. So with the first one, uh, in regard to, um, you know, to the Community Preservation Act, where you have, you know, I, I think it's extremely important. I'm, I'm very much for that. As a person who spent the last ten years, uh, on the Board of Directors for Melrose Little League, you know, the, the open space is an integral part of the, the community's livelihood and well-being. To watch, uh, all, you know, all children be able to go out there and, and, and play, uh, not just, you know, much baseball, but seeing all sports at all times. That, that community area is extremely valuable. And being able to have that there for everybody is, uh, is, is I think the, of the utmost importance. And along with that, you know, it's sort of lumped in there with the, uh, with the affordable housing. I think that's also extr- it, it, I think for many of us in this room, you know, we probably all agree that, you know, we, we don't have to worry as much, but there are those that I've spoken with that, you know, live, actually unfortunately, lived in Melrose and no longer could be a part of the community because, you know, they were essentially priced out of the city. And that's where it leads into the second, the second question, the second topic of this, which I think is almost more important, is we need to find a way to get those, you know, uh, low, you know, the low income and marginalized communities, community members able to stay in here. And if there's that, if that's something we can do to help them find a home, you know, find a piece of property or land, I think we should be for it and we should find a way to do that. Because if we're not, we're just, we're, we're pushing out individuals who can't get their feet under them. And we're, you know, we're going back to the first conversation, the, the last conversation we just had, which is why did it, why do people, why are people feeling left out? And we need to find a way to make them feel belong, belong to the community. And these are mechanisms to in fact do that, improve the, the, you know, the community space, affordable housing, giving them the ability to in fact, you know, buy into the area. And I think with those, it, it's, I think it's a very valuable, uh, cause to be a part of right now, uh, in Melrose. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. My, Ms. Maya, Ja- Jamaladeen.
Thank you, Diana. Um, so, yes, the short answer is yeah. This is a great step to support and help black and marginalized folks to live in this community, to actually invite them and help them get the house. And what's next? What can we do next after we bring them over and we tell them, hey, we're gonna help you buy this house? Is it, are they gonna feel actually welcomed? Are they gonna, is it sustainable for them? Um, that's the question. I'm just afraid to say, yes, I am in favor of this. And then we'll put, we'll tap ourself on our back and say, hey, we did our job. It's up to you. We, we did whatever we can do and you, you still didn't come and live within our community. No, the work is not done here, because after we do that, we still have to make sure to review our policies. Back to our first, uh, question, policies, procedures, um, the culture that we built within our community, to make sure that they are welcome. Because let's say it and name it here, that not only black people with low income don't feel welcomed in this community and they cannot buy a house in this community. It's actually even the wealthy people that are black and are marginalized, that they buy houses and they own houses in this community, they still feel othered, targeted and they're not welcomed. There is a lot of examples and I'm sure you, you've watched and heard a lot of stories about people that they own actually houses in Melrose, but just because that the way, uh, how they look or their skin color, they've been targeted. So yes, let's try to accomplish those two policies, but after that, we need to do more. The work, our work is not done here. We need to do more for our black people and for our marginalized population. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Christopher Solomon.
Uh, thank you. The Community Preservation Act is, uh, something I strongly believe in. Um, I tried with a group of, uh, individuals, interested parties about fifteen years ago to pass it in the uh, city of Melrose. Back then it was the Board of Aldermen. And unfortunately, we didn't have enough political support. We didn't have enough votes. So it never passed the Board of Aldermen. It never got to a citywide ballot. Um, but I think, um, times have changed and I think, uh, certainly if I'm lucky enough to get on other city council, I would advocate for it. I know that a number of the other candidates who are here with me today support it. And I think we could build a real coalition, whoever gets in, if there's enough of us on there, if we can get a majority, we should pass it. And we should put it on the ballot. And I think that we should organize and I think we could get enough support to get it passed. And without going too deep into the weeds on the CPA, um, and this is for the benefit of folks who are listening um, to this at, at a future time, what it is, it is a tax. But what I like about it is it's a targeted tax. And what it does is it allows for the raising of revenue for very specific projects, for affordable housing, for historic preservation, for open space and recreational, uh, facilities outdoors. And that's important because, um, it's important for people who live in Melrose, who are taxpayers, who are paying uh, for, uh, the ability to live here and own property to know where their tax money is going. That's why I like this, because they can see where it's going and you can have some control over it. And I think that's very important, particularly, uh, for members of the Melrose community that are on fixed incomes. But focusing on the CPA, there's also other things you can do with it. It's a one to three percent um, sliding scale. So we don't have to have three percent. We could have one percent. That's fine. There's also an exclusion, I believe it's about a hundred K, hundred thousand dollars of your first income of your house. So it's, it's something that we could work with and we could, um, you know, tweak as we need to or change. And the most important thing I like about it, and a lot of people don't know, is that unlike a general levy increase, is that when it's passed, you get matching funds from the state. So for example, and this is just, you know, for the benefit of our discussion, if we raised a hundred thousand dollars through the CPA, this year I believe we get twenty or twenty-five percent matching funds from the state. So we get an additional twenty, an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. That's great. That's money we leave on the table every year with the state. And I don't think we should pass that up without tight things are financially for all of the needs of the city of Melrose. The second part of the question talked about the down payment program for families that can't afford the ability to get their first house. I fully support that, um, particularly, uh, when it affects, um, families of color. Um, when I worked, uh, for the Committee Against Discrimination in Housing in Washington DC, one of the things I worked on at that time was regulations that were being used at the federal level in order to open up the ability of lending institutions to relax them with the requirements more or less force banks.
This is time, sorry, thank you.
Force banks to open up the, up the ability to lend, uh, money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ryan Williams.
Thank you. So the answer that you should all be listening for is the word yes. If you don't hear a candidate say yes tonight, then their answer is no. That's what people in politics do. You ask them a question and they say everything except yes. For both of these questions, I am a hard yes. I am known as the loudest and most consistent supporter of the CPA on today's city council. And my colleagues will tell you that I raise this issue on a regular basis. It's a no-brainer. Um, point of clarification, while it is a charge that appears on the property tax budget, it isn't really the same as a tax, because it doesn't get increased with the levy like the rest of our taxes do every year with the limits of two and a half percent. Um, I wrote an article on the CPA a few years ago in two thousand nineteen that goes into some more detail about some of the exemptions and the ways that we can activate this in Melrose. The, the bottom line is that it costs less than Netflix and yes, the state will kick in about thirty percent. Um, I agree that it is a super good targeted use of funding, although in some communities, they've used it for, I'll say, less than beneficial purposes. But, um, if you want to learn more about the CPA, you can just search my name and CPA in Melrose. And I'm sure that article will come up and you could read more about it. Um, in regard to the housing, um, down payment question, not only do I think that this is a great idea, but I actually think it would be less expensive than we think it would be. Um, so I actually sold my condo in Melrose. I'm moving to a home in Melrose. So I'm still in Melrose. Um, in last week, we received many offers and a lot of them had less than ten percent down. We own a condo. It's fairly small, thousand square feet, so perfect starter home for people, um, who don't have the large incomes or built equity to move into. And we received quite a few offers and some of these cash amounts were pretty small. So I think a couple thousand dollars can make a big difference. But really to, to echo Counselor Jamaladeen's point, we have to be careful and we can't just put these things out there and expect that they're going to result in victory. Um, because if you put this out into a community that's eighty-nine percent white, you're gonna get eighty-nine percent white people. And so if the, if the goal is racial justice, more than low and moderate income, um, support, you have to, um, actively call these people in. You have to seek them out through some other means. You have to encourage them to apply. You have to support them through the application process. You probably cannot make the application dependent on race, especially with the Supreme Court rulings that we've had recently around affirmative action. But what you can do is engage in a kind of casework approach that finds people that could use this help, encourages them to apply and then, uh, kind of holds their hand through the application process, excuse me, the application process, which would have to be kind of blind to some of these characteristics and give them a better chance of succeeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edward O'Connell.
Thank you, Ms. Roger. I wholeheartedly support adoption of CPA with all available exemptions and exclusions for seniors and people of limited financial means. This is a no-brainer for me, as is so often said and has been said tonight. We're leaving state money on the table by not adopting this measure. Melrose needs all the available tools at its disposal, financial and otherwise, if we're going to get serious about affordable housing, as well as with regard to historic preservation and open space. In fact, I think there's an important interplay between affordable housing and historic preservation whereby Melrose could actually facilitate the creation of more affordable housing while preserving the historic character of our existing built environment. In my opinion, if we want a truly diverse In my opinion, if we want a truly diverse, livable community with a high quality of life for all, then smart and sustained investments in our housing stock, our built environment, our municipal infrastructure, and our open spaces is the way to go. As a city counselor, I will advocate and support such an approach and for the financial investments necessary to make it happen. The CPA is one part of what should be an active and concerted effort toward greater access to housing opportunities in Melrose. Likewise, the creation of the Down Payment Assistance Fund, we need to help respective homebuyers, particularly members of historically and currently marginalized communities to find the means to make a down payment and finance a home purchase. The Down Payment Assistance Fund is one important piece of the puzzle. As a city council, I will fully support and advocate for efforts to use this tool and others to achieve our stated goals. But here's a reality check, friends. The hard truth is that these things take time and effort and resources. They also take votes. And on the Melrose City Council ordinances and appropriations require eight votes. That means as a practical matter that the voters who don't just care about these issues in a theoretical sense, but actually want to see change and progress happen, need to use all four of their at-large votes, along with their ward counselor vote, to elect counselors who are going to move this agenda forward. Four at-large votes for candidates who reflect your values and goals for city government gets us closer to where we need to be. Two votes or one vote for councillor at large, the so-called bullet vote, gets you and us collectively nowhere as a practical political matter. Eight is where we need to be to get real work done on the city council. And we need people in government with the experience and know-how to get us there. I hope the voters that want action on these issues think this through and vote for a team and not just for one or two people. We sell ourselves short and we sell our community short when we don't fully exercise our franchise. Please don't leave votes on the table. Use them all, I say, and wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Berardi.
Um, at this moment, real, I don't think this would be realistic. As it is, there are many residents who have been here for decades, if not generations. We are getting taxed upon tax upon tax. They are adding on our ballot another debt exception tax. There are people who have their houses paid for and can no longer live here because of the tax. To add on another tax could devastate some families and it would cause more friction between the people. It is fabulous if we could get it on a state level or federal level, but it will bring bring more problems. We have structural problem within Melrose that Melrose cannot fix now. I say we fix the city first, fix the roads, fix the um, first responder buildings, make it safe for everyone, and then we can welcome people in, more people of all types. But I'm sorry, I just, I know many people would be against this right now. I speak to many people in Melrose. I grew up here and work here. And it's, it would be a hardship on them. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Lila. In your early.
Thank you, Ms. Rocha. Um, the availability and affordability of housing in Melrose are crucial areas that I've championed while I've been on the council and will be advocating for moving forward. So yes, quick answer, I'm supportive of both passing the CPA and creating a down payment assistance fund. I'm on the record and proud to be one of the seven counselors who voted to accept the Melrose Housing Production Plan. I've also co-filled legislation to accept the city's first Affordable Housing Trust. And we only have a 250,000 in that right now and we have a long way to go. Um, the CPA is a huge missed opportunity, as many people have said tonight, for this community. I'm looking forward to working with the next mayor to help ensure we prioritize this in the future. Uh, we, we need housing of all types and all price points to ensure that we foster a welcoming community and diverse community for all residents to live and thrive. And I agree with counselors Jamal Adin and Williams that these two strategies in and of themselves are not nearly enough to combat racism and racial justice issues throughout our city, but they're important pieces of a larger strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now we're going to move to the work candidates to answer the second question. Starting with Ms. Barbara Travers.
Hi, thanks again. Um, so I am a yes and yes on this one to um, echo Ed O'Connell's line, which he stole from me. It is a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. It is a five dollars, five percent surcharge, um, not a tax. So this is a surcharge on your taxes that are already levied on your houses with an exemption that exists there. And the proposed bill in the state government already has exemption limits for families earning under a certain income. We need to create easy pathways and accessible pathways for our citizens to be able to support and sustain the exemption process. It does include an annual renewal application. This should be something that City Hall makes readily available for all of our um, residents. This would support the work being done in our city on multiple buildings, including Memorial Hall or Main Fire Station, et cetera, plus green space, plus affordable housing. What's not to love? I do recognize the need for oversight, thoughtfulness, and clear communication around the implementation of these projects to ensure that they get strategically to to truly accomplish the goals of the CPA with transparency and effectiveness. For down payment assistance, I work as the VP of Finance and Administration at an organization dedicated to breaking the cycle of homelessness. Our organization serves young adults from 18 to 24 in getting job training and placements and continuing that support for three years beyond. Creating access is one step. Creating systems that support and scaffold success for populations who have historically been kept out of upward financial and class mobility is the next sustaining effort towards equity in marginalized communities. Homeownership is one of the ways to build wealth and security and opening doors of access to communities of color in Melrose makes sense to me. Racially diverse neighborhoods have been shown over and over again to have strong social and emotional and academic outcomes in student populations. Encouraging, it encourages small business growth and civic engagement. I support these outcomes, so I support the efforts that move us towards them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kimberly Undiver.
I, yes, I support these two strategies as a way of investing in ourselves and our community. The CPA is an opportunity to gain matching funds from the state, as has been mentioned, and to focus on three of our important shared goals. And down payment assistance is a counterweight that would help families get started on homeownership who can't lean on generational wealth or their extended family to help them get started. Um, to make the CPA strategy the most effective, we should be thoughtful about our implementation and have a plan for how we're going to allocate funding to these various goals. Uh, there is um, a requirement that 10% of the money goes towards each goal, but then there are some decisions to make about the other spending. So it's important to make sure that we have a goal upfront of spending money where we would like to spend it, including enough funding towards affordable housing. Um, and with regards to setting up a down payment assistance program, I would want to make sure that those who access the funds are set up to be successful through using some level of prequalifications and putting ongoing, ongoing supports in place for them as um, as they proceed um, in their housing. Um, with those notes around how we would steward these funds, I am in strong support of these strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Levin, uh, Ramon.
I've been, oh, sorry. Oh, it's quite all right. It's a tough name to pronounce. Um, well, at the risk of quoting Jane Austen, uh, I'm a thousand times yes on uh, on both of these questions. So um, you know, when you think about uh, wealth building in this country, in Melrose certainly, you create familial wealth primarily through homeownership. That's just uh, uh, really uh, the main driver for for a lot of Americans and a lot of folks in Melrose. So when you look at the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston's study um, of wealth in in our community, uh, they said the average white family has, uh, this is a few years ago, so the numbers would probably be a little different now, but about $250,000 of aggregate wealth per white family and eight dollars, eight for uh, on average for black families. And so uh, that's just a incredible policy failure. So uh, since we're talking about housing in the in the context of racial justice, you can even go back and look at the 1938 map of Melrose to see where your home is in in that historical red line. You may even have a restrictive covenant um, on your deed, even though it's not legally enforceable. But in any event, uh, to get to the question at hand, um, I really highly recommend everyone working in local government to read Richard Rothstein's book, Color of Law. Really goes into the uh, important history behind this. But uh, ye- yes to the passage of the Community Preservation Act. I think it's an enormously uh, helpful tool, uh, if if done appropriately and and uh, folks have thrown out a lot of great ideas here on the homeownership front. I think, you know, looking at uh, first-time homebuyer programs, access to capital and funding, um, running uh, perhaps uh, maybe collaborating with local other communities on lending education and av- advocating for increased building permits. Um, looking at a regional strategy uh, and lobbying state government to advocate for credit scoring practices that are less discriminatory, so um, and uh, increasing diversity in in the appraisal profession. I know those are a little less than what we're talking about today, but I think enormously important when thinking about home valuation and discrimination on the rental front. I think looking at rental assistance programs. You know, maybe there's uh, opportunities for housing to be made available for educators or other city employees. Um, and then just, you know, uh, looking at larger zoning um, and where it's appropriate to apply inclusionary zoning practices, accessory dwelling units, so you can add on some units uh, without much trouble, upzoning around transit. Maybe stepping back a little bit and getting a little more macro and and lobbying the state legislature to consider um, you know, stretch goals like uh, baby bonds, which a lot of studies say that within two generations, you could narrow all racial wealth gaps and all wealth gaps. Um, and and just uh, looking at some experimental policy. So I do a lot of work on eviction prevention, first-time homebuyers uh, programs, um, access to capital, home buying programs around the country and um, really excited to work on both of these questions. And again, it's a, it's a yes for me.
Thank you. Ms. Manchola, can I, can I, Teddy?
Hi, everyone. Um, I want to say that as a city counselor, I was one of those who voted for the Housing Production Plan. And I'm a big fat yes on both the CPA and um, down payments for houses. Um, and I also, part of this for me is the education around the housing crisis and why affordable housing is so important, why mixed housing is so important. And I think as Barb Travers said, it really actually lends itself to a more vibrant community, more resources, more businesses. Um, and those are the things that Melrose really needs right now. In our four square miles, we don't have a lot of income. And I know that people are very well aware of our budget issues at the school level and at the city level. And housing actually provides a lot of opportunity for us to grow and also to encourage others um, to come into our city and spend their money here as well. Um, so I think those pieces are important to remember. My husband actually works in affordable housing. Um, and so we spend a lot of time in our home talking about these issues. And we, he's taught me a new term and I think another counselor, Counselor Echols, has used this. Um, instead of NIMBY, it's YIMBY and it is yes in my backyard. And I absolutely want these housing developments built. I want our veterans to have a place to live who are on a fixed income. I want our elderly, when they're downsizing, to be able to stay in our community and live here. I want single moms to be able to come to our community and find affordable housing. I want young families to be able to come here. That's what will make us a strong city um, when we have representation. And then as some counselors and candidates have alluded to, it's not just even having that fabric of our city, but then how do we make sure that those residents are included? How are they included in choosing our superintendent? How are they included in making decisions and supporting what is happening in the mayor's office? Um, we have a lot of work to do in that area. Um, and I'm really looking forward to working with city counselors um, who want to make that work happen and really take action and make change.
Thank you. I want to thank, uh, I want to thank you for attending the Racial Justice City Council Candidate Forum. The recording of this event will be posted at www.melroseracialjusticeforums.org. Please register for our upcoming Racial Justice Forum. Oh, sorry, there it goes there. Um, because what you said for our Racial Justice, Justice School Committee Candidate Forum at Melrose Racial Justice Forums.org. The School Committee Forum on October 4. And please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 7. Thank you very much.